I'm sorry, so I just want to make sure before we move on, there's nothing you personally would like to share with us?
Thank you.
Okay. And then we have Michelle Dupuy.
Hi, I'm Michelle Dupuy. I'm the academic coach at Natrog School. I worked with Kristen on this letter and I'd like to pick up where she left off. What are the community considerations and impacts when closing one school over another? For example, Natrog is the only school in downtown Willimantic. Think about the optics of closing it. What does it say and show to the downtown community? What kind of impact would it have on the community for members to see that theirs is one not good enough to house a school? There was discussion that if Natrog closes, a bus or van could be used to transport Willimantic parents without cars in the case of having to pick up a sick child or attend a school event. How will this make parents feel? How will the closure of Wyndham Center impact that community? How will bus routes be impacted? Will students be on the bus? Time to be taken to a consolidated K2 or 3-5 school? There are already some bus rides that are as long as one and up to one and a half hours potentially for students riding from Wyndham to Willimantic for the middle school. What will become of the closed school? Is there an idea floating for its use that we're not privy to? Wouldn't a study done to thoroughly research closure before a decision about which school is made be in order here? We invested thousands of dollars into a forensic audit due to lack of appropriate oversight of the finances of Wyndham Public Schools. I'm sure board members would agree that investing money into a study regarding a school closure is just as, if not more, valid and important. I'm concerned that in two weeks, the Ad Hoc Elementary Consolidation Committee is expected to recommend to the Board of Ed which school is to be closed with seemingly limited or no thorough study of the possible scenarios or impacts that would have on our students and community. As far as I could tell from the information provided last night anyways. This requires thoughtful, technical, and critical analysis. Also, can we really consider closing a school while we're in the midst of a pandemic and don't yet know the impacts it will have? Lastly, I want to ask this, do we have to close a school? I understand the Board of Finance has put pressure on the Board of Ed to find ways to save money. I understand that it benefits the Board of Ed to have a better working relationship with the town, but I also know that our Wyndham and Willimantic kids deserve better. When the high school renovation is complete, we will hopefully attract new families to move to this community. I don't see the closure, school closure scenario resulting in more equity and opportunities. In fact, I see the opposite. I see overcrowding, no room to grow, and a very strong statement being made to our community and others, part of which is that Wyndham is too poor to keep schools open. Let's think outside the box for creative solutions and activate our entire community to get the budgets we need passed. Let's think of revenue solutions like finally implementing a dual language school we've all been waiting so long for. And at the very, very least, let's adequately research this idea before making such an impactful decision.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all that great input and it will definitely be taken into consideration by the board. Anybody else want to speak during public comment? Okay, so seeing nobody, Janet, I haven't missed anybody, have I?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to get into the agenda. The first item after public comment is approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes from January 27th. I'd entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
Second. By Mark, seconded by Tracy. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call, please, Janet.
Ms. I.
Hi.
Dr. Galucci.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi, sorry.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Hi.
Mr. Doyle.
Hi.
Ms. Dunick. Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Ms. Ray. Target shows Ms. Ray and Ms. Dunick are not in attendance.
Right, as far as I can tell. Thank you. So we're going to have some reports from the superintendent next. The first part of the report is on COVID-19 and I'll hand it over to you and school reopening information.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully everybody can see my PowerPoint. Okay, I'm going to do two things tonight and it sounds like we may even have Neil jump in and do a quick little overview on some of the IT concerns as well. I'm going to give you just a very quick update on the elementary consolidation as well as an update on COVID-19 and how it's impacting district operations. So as was mentioned in the public comment last night, Neil and I presented to the school governance councils of the two schools that are being considered for consolidation. There were also several members of the board at the meeting. Thank you to Mark and Paula and Tracy for being there. I appreciate that. The meeting participants asked a number of clarifying questions, requested specific details, and raised concerns about the consolidation, which is exactly what you witnessed during public comment. The elementary ad hoc committee will meet again in the next week or two to determine the process and timeline moving forward. As I mentioned multiple times last night, the timeline and all of the details were just proposed timelines. So after, you know, hearing the concerns, and I took a lengthy list of notes last night, I think it's warranted for us to take some time to figure out what our next steps are. So people can feel relaxed that we're not going to rush into this. We do know though, from a pretty detailed analysis of our budgets, that we're going to end up essentially closing a school if we don't close a school. We cannot maintain the staffing structure with the budgets we have. It's not possible. And we'll end up in a position like we were last year having to lay off multiple people. And that will happen year after year after year until the schools won't have what they need to even help, to even support the students. So we're going to revisit this, but we'll let the ad hoc committee take it from here and come up with the process by which they'll make the decision in the timeline for that moving forward. So it will not happen at the next board meeting, but it will happen at some point in the future. So I just can put that.
Dr. Youngberg?
Yes.
Dr. I'm just a little confused because, so you jumped down to committee reports.
So I did, okay, well, you're right. It's part of the committee report, but at least it's addressed. I know, so last night's meeting was strange because it was, was my meeting with the SGCs. It wasn't actually the committee doing the work, so I thought I was reporting out on it. But if Paula has anything more to add at the ad.
Well, let's just wait till we get to that part of the agenda. That's.
Okay, fair enough.
There.
Okay, so on the screen are just some bullets from our last public health, Department of Public Health call and the State Department of Ed. Yesterday, they let us know we could upload our employees who are 65 years or older into VAMs. They're, so they are now eligible to get their vaccinations. That's very important because once that group's done, then we start all the educators. We have 45 members, 45 employees in our district who qualify, so it's exciting that they will start that process soon. Some people have appointments in the next couple of days, which is really great. DPH let us know that the case rates across the state are still high, but they're actually the lowest the state has seen since early November. So they're, they were pleased about that. They did mention that they have confirmed 20 cases of the B117 strain. And again, they believe there's probably more than 20 cases, but there's only two labs in the state that actually give the confirmation, but they have 20 confirmed cases thus far. Dr. Carter, who is the number one epidemiologist in the state, basically said that he can't make any predictions about what's going to happen in the future. He wants to take things one week at a time, which he understands is really hard for planning. But that's his recommendation. He did mention that he thinks the weeks following our April vacation is going to be a concern. So we'll be watching that carefully. They went over again, the idea of multiple mitigation strategies, such as, you know, time, how much time you spend with one another, the distance you have between people, your masks. And again, it's not just, it's not any one mitigation strategy, it's many. And if you reduce any one of them, then you need to rely more heavily on the other. So that's something they have been saying to us from the beginning. It's a combination of mitigation strategies. They also mentioned that the CDC might be putting out new mask recommendations because there was a double mask study. When I read the double mask study, it did not look like the CDC was making recommendations yet. So we're waiting to see if the CDC is going to recommend two masks. And if they do that, then I'm guessing that Addendum 11 will be revised accordingly. So more to come on that. The small study.
Can I say something, please?
Sure.
They just did.
Yeah, they did this this evening.
Ten minutes ago.
Okay, okay.
Just to.
Okay, so then, okay, so if the CDC has made recommendations, that'll trigger the Addendum 11 to be revised, which would trigger the school the school system to have a response and, and work on that. So the COVID team, I see Suzanne Karah shaking her head, the COVID team has work to do. So more to come on that. Thank you, Mr. Dr. Gomez. The Department of Public Health mourned about sports. They have already expressed their concerns about sports. They also expressed their concerns about some of the social events, social activities that happen after a sporting event or before a sporting event that they think is going to add to potential cases. So they are just bringing it up that we really have to be vigilant. We monitor the kids fairly well when they're actually playing the sports, but after that, when they're all hanging out together is a different story. A couple of the superintendents brought up the proms and graduations and asked DPH to give some direction about what those might look like, and they basically said they couldn't answer, but that it probably made sense for us to assume that this year's proms and graduations will look like last year's. And that's really all they said. So I'm guessing that that'll be revisited each week now that we know that the DPH is really looking at things in just a week interval. Any questions on this, on this slide? Okay, today's data. We have 39 students who are either in quarantine or isolation, and we have four staff members. You can see the, the number of total cases to date since the school year started back in September. 268 total cases for our students, which is 8.3% of the student population. And 63 cases for staff members, which is 8.78% of the population. Our case rate in Wyndham has fallen. We're down to 72. We were well into the 100s just a few weeks ago, so that's good to see. You can see we slipped down there a little bit. Hampton is still over 100 per 100,000. We're at 72 and Neil, you're making a prediction about tomorrow? Can I mute? You're muted, yeah.
Sorry, I think it will be lower. I'm afraid to say any numbers in.
I understand, knock on wood, exactly. All right, the next slide, the next set of information I'm going to share with you is in response to a lot of questions that I've been receiving about, how do I know when I make the statement, we're not transmitting the virus in schools? You know, how do I know that the kids are safe? How do I know that the staff members are safe? So I'm going to share a number of bulleted points, data points that my COVID warrior team have helped me pull together by going through all of our data. The school nurses, most especially Tara Webb and Kristen Gooden, have been dealing with the COVID cases and, and our COVID compliance since the start of the school year. So they've literally been working through nearly 1,000 different cases have been resolved. Not positive cases, but people being quarantined. So this data comes from the database that they have been collecting since we started the school year. I want to just start off saying this right up front. I would love for there to be no cases in the district. I would love for no one to get sick and no one to test positive. I wish that were something that we could, could do or could hope for, but I'm going to share this data with you just so everyone has an idea of what's going on. Okay, so since September, you already knew this data point from the last slide, there have been 268 student cases or 8.3% of our student body has tested positive. To me, that's a small percentage. Again, don't want anybody to be sick, but 92% or just under 92% of our kiddos have not tested positive. And I know the argument is, we don't test kids all the time, so how do you know? I'm guessing now at this point, given that it's a global pandemic, that if kids are showing symptoms, more than likely they're going to get a test, especially since testing has become something that's available all over the place. Of the 268 positive student cases, 107 of those cases have been students who are fully virtual, meaning they haven't come to our school. They haven't come in. So nearly 40% of our cases are for students that are not coming into the building. Since September, 63 of our 717 employees have tested positive or 8.78%. Again, you already saw that data point. Since September, there have been 96 staff members who have been quarantined as a result of an exposure in the Wyndham Public Schools with five staff members ending up testing positive. So from the 96 quarantines, we've gotten five positive cases or 5.2% of that group. Of those five positive cases from the night, from those 96 staff members or 96 different quarantines, three were likely due to a workplace transmission. And one of those occurred, likely occurred in a classroom. They actually, in our DPH call on Tuesday, talked about this term called attribution. And it's what DPH just uses to tell you that you can't actually ever be definitive about where a virus comes from. You can make an educated guess about where it might have come from, but you, you never actually know. So that's what we're doing here is we're making an educated guess because the people who were quarantined, who tested positive, didn't tell us that they knew of an outside exposure. Many of our staff members have self-reported outside exposures, and that's actually one of our bullet points. Since September, 17 of our 329 certified staff members who work directly with students in classrooms and offices have tested positive. That's 5.1%. Again, I don't want anybody to get sick, but that means that nearly 95% of the staff have remained healthy since September. That's, to me, that's, those are pretty good odds. Most of our staff members who have tested positive have self-reported being exposed to a family member or a close friend who tested positive prior to their illness. That is something, that's a discussion they have with the school nurses, but it's, it's important for everyone to know that they're saying that they, that the exposure is more than likely happening outside of school. The district has overwhelming data that shows the virus passes through families and the virus absolutely loves social gatherings. So we know that from all the contact tracing of nearly 1,000 different cases, 1,000 different situations. And that's why we keep telling people to stay home if they're not feeling well and not to gather together with people outside of your family. So that's just some of the data. I don't know if there's questions. Again, this, this is, I don't want to go any deeper into this data because it's people's medical information, but I thought this might help paint the picture about why I feel confident in saying the virus is not being spread or we've minimized the spread of the virus in our schools.
Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments they'd like to make at this point?
Yeah, this is Mary.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, I, I think it's really great that we have such, you know, the nurses are so diligent and, you know, this is great data. I mean, I really like seeing the numbers. But I do just want to say, the idea that we can't, as the public health officials say, we can't know where it's going, where it's coming from. So that means we can't really be confident that it's not spreading in schools either. So, you know, it could have passed through an asymptomatic person by the time it's caught, you know, weeks later in, in another building or out in the community, we don't know that it passed through the schools. I, I do just want to make that point. And the other thing is, you know, the numbers do look good and I'm, I'm very happy with the cautions that we've taken in this district and, and in the state. However, we must all be aware that the schools, even when they've been open and hybrid with the cohorts, there are still large numbers of students who don't come in at all. So I think saying it's an 8.3% rate when so many people have avoided the schools is a kind of false positive or a false, you know, if everyone had been going to school and, so I don't want to blame anyone, but I want to say I'm very, I want to be more cautious and more rigorous about looking at numbers. And I mean, I do think the state is somewhat at fault because they're not saying, look, how do we count the students who don't come at all or, you know, come part of the time because a lot of people who said they wanted to come in person twice a week don't. So I, I just wanted to throw those thoughts in there.
Thanks, Mary. I just, I guess if I look at the adult data and if I know that I have, you know, if I have 329 certified staff members who work directly with the students and only 17 of that group has tested positive, I'm assuming that the adults would take themselves to get tested if they weren't feeling well. Obviously, it's assumptions. There's nothing definitive. But if only 5% of that large group that works directly with kids has remained healthy, to me, that says that it's not being spread in classrooms. Wouldn't the adults get sick?
I mean, again, I'm saying there aren't the numbers of kids in the classroom. So, so that, that in itself is a mitigation, that the, the classes are half full, if that. So I'm not sure how I can explain the, the positives of the staff. You know, I'm glad they're low, but it's, if we start bringing more students in, if we start bringing more people in, now we're going to get more opportunities for the virus to spread.
So luckily, the way we've set up the system is we have a daily check-in. So if that happened, we would know right away. And we obviously wouldn't let that go on because we are tracking the data as carefully enough to be able to provide this data for you. At our 315 meeting every single day, we go through the scenarios. We go through the, the details. So if we saw that something was spreading, we would shut it down, which is what we've done before. I appreciate, I appreciate you sharing your concerns.
I think, to pick up on Mary's point, and Mary, I'm not sure I'm interpreting everything you're saying, but just to pick up on your point, Mary, I think one of the things you're saying is if we decided to try to bring more students back into the schools, that this whole picture would change very, very fast, potentially.
Yes, yes. Well, if you remember back in, in, in the fall, they were telling us that, that we were going to have these widespread transmissions of the virus. It was going to happen. There were going to be many, many people sick. That's not what we saw. So I don't know if we can keep going on what we think is going to happen. I think we have to, we have to figure out, is it really happening? Obviously, I want to try to keep everyone as safe as possible, but I'll just leave it at that.
So anybody else on the board who would like to speak? Okay, I guess we can move on.
Okay, we continue to track our attendance data. This week in 2020, this, it's actually last week in 2020, was the lowest attendance rate we had all school year, or in this at least, between the first 20 weeks of school. So the gap between this year, 2021 and 2020 is about 5.6%, which equates to about 186 students who did not show up. So we're still, we're still very concerned about students not, the district not being able to account for students. But this week, the gap is not as large as it has been in the past because it was a low attendance week. And this is just a copy of the calendar that you saw at the last meeting. We are working, so we're in this week right here. We are working to get our data from the school families to determine if they would send their children to school if we were able to make that jump between March 1st and April 9th. So I'm hoping to get the data compiled. Well, we have to see how many of them have actually responded, but I know the schools are working diligently to get as many family responses as possible. So we can make a determination about what the classrooms might look like if we went ahead with that. We have made a decision that we'll get, we're going to leave our Flex Wednesdays intact through April 9th. We'll revisit that if it's going to continue past the 9th, you know, further down the road. But for right now, we know that that's the plan to leave it intact through April 9th. Any other questions? If not, I'm going to hand it over to Neil to make, to give some details about our IT issues.
No questions? Okay, it's all yours, Neil.
Just to give everybody an update. So recently, I actually sent an email to district staff because we are experiencing connectivity issues across the district of several varieties of the parent representing the SGC. I think she was mentioning the CEN, the Connecticut Education Network. And basically what that is, it's like a quasi-government network that goes across the state and that's what we use. We work off that, off the, off that network. So when some of the connectivity issues have been happening across the state, it impacts us. Some of the impact has been cloud-based services that have been taxed more because there are more virtual students across the country. Sometimes, for example, when we look up Google and checkout, there, what they'll be telling us, there's widespread downed outages and connectivity. So so we're aware of it and we're trying to improve it, but some of those are challenges beyond our control. Something we have been working on and something, and I see, actually, I'm looking into him and his beard right there. Our former IT director for years, we tried to put into the budget, we've tried to fund some longstanding infrastructure that could help in terms of backup systems and upgrades to our networks. So we're trying to do that now, but that won't be built in a day. And when we get to some of the later committee reports, we'll talk about some of those infrastructures being spent through grant money to help us speed up the process. Not that it's probably the answer you want to hear, but that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to upgrade our, our devices as quickly as possible. At this case, right now, the problem is sometimes we're ordering devices, but they're just backlogged. And, and that's kind of where we are at. Not that, I don't, again, even in the email to the district staff, it is frustrating on my end to not be able to solve it quickly, but at least acknowledge that we are experiencing some of these issues. And we're by far not the only district in the state experiencing them.
Thanks, Neil.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments on this? Or Tracy, were you going to, Dr. Youngberg, were you going to chime in?
I mean, some of the things that Neil was talking about are not within our control, but some of them are really due to the fact that we have, we have not adequately funded the IT department in I don't know how many years because we make a decision about, we need to keep people on the payroll versus, you know, investing in infrastructure. And it's one of the reasons why we're having the discussion about elementary consolidation because our budgets don't support all the things we actually need. IT is one example of those things.
Well, I know we talked about it last week at one of the committee meetings, so I'm assuming we'll hear a little bit more when we get that committee report. I just, on this topic, I want to mention that when I was watching the governor's budget address this afternoon and reading the budget documents and listening to the briefing. I'm trying to, you know, I'm sure we'll all get analysis from Cave and other places about where there is money for, to help us with some of this stuff, but there was mention of it. So hopefully that will be in, in his proposed budget somewhere. I mean, as far as getting money to, to do some of the things we need to do.
Okay, moving right along. So the district received a donation of 100 face shields, the plastic guards from a company called 1800 Shields. They are going to be delivered to the schools. We have already purchased face shields for our teachers as well, but it's, it's always nice to have extras if they choose to wear them. So we appreciate that donation. And I imagine it's a business, it's a business move. If we like them, we'll order more. I'm guessing that's why they're giving them away for free. Any questions on that donation?
I just had a question. Do we have to affirmatively accept that donation or acknowledge it in actions?
So that's, that's a question for Janet Testa. Janet Testa?
No, it's under the threshold in the side.
Okay, okay, thanks.
There it is. Thank you. And next up, we have the first reading of policy on magnet schools enrollment outside of attendance area. And I believe we have, we have Dr. Wondambi on the call.
I'm right here.
There she is. So if there's any questions related to this policy, she can help us.
Does anybody on the board have any questions on the, that document that we got in our packet for the first reading?
This is Tracy Lambert. Are we going to discuss it now or under committee reports?
I think it's fine to discuss it now. I mean, here, it's on the agenda here. So, you know, we're not taking action tonight, so tonight, now would be a good time to ask clarifying questions or make suggestions.
Okay, um, the, if a student is selected as an out-of-district student for Barrows and moves in district or selected as an in-district and moves out, the student continues to attend Barrows. The student's parents or guardians must inform both districts of the address change within two weeks. Does the other district have a right to say no? Say, I moved to Lebanon and my child was at Barrows. Does Lebanon have the right to say, no, we're not supporting that extra child?
That's a question I cannot answer. So that was in the policy even beforehand. So the only thing I did was separate out compañeros in Barrows. So I'm going to have to pass that to Neil, who would be, Neil smiling like, thank you so much for doing this.
My guess is the
To be honest, this is just the first reading, so we can have it by next meeting. And I just had the opportunity to read the packet today. I apologize for that. I usually read it over the weekend. I had a little bit of a crazy weekend, so I just read it today before the meeting. And I came up with three separate questions. And so get them to me before the next, the second reading, an email to the board, end of the week, whatever you need to do. But that was one question. If the staff lottery is conducted after the general lottery, only the students for staff, only the student whose children are not selected to the general lottery and whose parents or Wyndham Public Schools employees will be eligible for the staff lottery. The number of applicants for this preference exceeds the number of available seats available. Then the selection will be conducted using a randomizing program. So does that mean that if a student isn't selected as a general application, then staff preference is initiated?
For Barrows, yes. So you're reading again the Barrows portion.
Right. Why isn't it the same for compañeros?
It just historically has not been. So the changes that are being made there, so we don't have staff preference seats. That's the difference. So Barrows has two seats that are reserved at each grade level that are there for staff preference. We don't actually reserve seats in the grade levels. So if after sibling preference, there's room, then staff preference comes next.
At Barrows?
No, 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 compañeros.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand it before I approve it, that's all. I don't often ask a lot of questions, but when they come up, I try to get them. And then for compañeros, it says, you know, kindergarten, pre-K, they're all eligible for compañeros. But then as you get up to the upper levels, only the middle school students who are Spanish-speaking as their first language are automatically allowed to enroll. And that's because of attrition? We're not overloading? I just want to make sure I understand it.
Right, it's not because, okay, so it's not because of attrition. The reason behind that, that's a change. That's an actual change that we're doing. We're adding students who are in our newcomer program. And there are two reasons that we're doing that. The first reason is that there's the issue of balance. For a two-way dual-language program to work, you have to have X percentage. Basically, roughly speaking, 50% of your students are Spanish speakers and 50% are English speakers dominantly, right? But by the time you get to the middle school age, kids are now preferring English. They have become proficient in English. Those who had come in as Spanish speakers are no longer predominantly Spanish speakers. They're predominantly English speakers.
Okay.
So teachers are having trouble getting the kids to speak in Spanish still. So infusing students who are Spanish speakers into the program is beneficial for all the students who are en compañeros. So that's the first reason, because now you have the Spanish models back in the program. The second reason is that we know research-wise, I'm going to plug in my computer for a second, sorry, because my internet is playing, okay. Doing it is that we also know that for kids who are newcomers, the research demonstrates that a dual-language program is better than any other kind of program, such as a pull-out newcomer program or even for ELL teachers to push in. Now, what we're not doing is overcrowding the classes. We are bringing in our newcomer teacher into compañeros, so that we have an additional. It's not an additional staff, so there's no cost to it. She already works at our school. But because we're fusing the programs, the teacher will be working in compañeros.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. Is it possible to get information on like the past five years attrition? Or how many students we've added to that program as we've gone along?
Yes, we can do that for you.
Just like, you know, the past three, five years, something, whatever we have data on, just to let us see as a board what those numbers look like going up. Are they going up significantly? Are they just going up moderately? Are they fairly staying level? Because some kids are moving out of district, moving back out of compañeros, moving into
Information for you, that's easy.
I really appreciate your answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Those are great questions. Neil, you wanted to weigh in?
I may have gotten some telecommunications from Miguel Pabon. To answer the first part of Ms. Lambert's question, if the student was to go back to Lebanon, and that's their hometown, they cannot refuse access to that student by law.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to know more about the telecommunications thing, but.
It was just a text.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mark?
Well, as Paula pointed out, I am an old man. And when we set up the compañeros program, one of the basic tenants of the program was we had to only accept Spanish-speaking students in the upper grades, because by third or fourth grade, as Adriana pointed out, the Spanish drops out. They're talking English on the playground, they're talking English on Spanish days. It's always, so I'm surprised that's coming back as a new tenant. I'll read the policy in more detail. I'd also be interested in the numbers, because that was the basic tenant when we started the program, that we would actually overload, we would actually recruit more than 50% native Hispanic speakers to begin with, because we knew the attrition. And then we would only add native Spanish speakers as the grades went on. So I'll be interested in seeing those numbers.
Good point, Mark. As many people know, that program is near and dear to my heart, because all three of my children went through it. And it's good to know that, you know, it's still there and that, you know, we're adjusting with time, so.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments about that? Mark, should we give you another title, like sort of a board historian or something?
Paul and I can co-share the historian role.
Right, right, that's probably you and Paula. Tracy's getting up there, though, too, as far as
Eventually, they all get old. What can you do?
I object to that. I object.
I meant with experience on the board, that's what I meant.
I'm not going to live that down, am I?
Okay, anything else before we move on to reports? Okay, so we're on to committee reports, and I'm going to hand it over to Old Man Doyle for Finance and Audit Committee.
Thank you. Well, I had, hopefully you read your email. I had the minutes, I requested the minutes we sent to the board members. The major issue we talked about was the ESSER grant, the E-S-S-E-R-2, which the good news is it's $5.9 million we will be getting. It's all going to be aimed towards covert. We're going to have to do, if you get a chance to read the proposal, it's in our email somewhere. We're going to have to do pre-assessment to find out where the kids are. We're going to have to then aim the program to bring them back to where they should be. We talked about in committee about using the money, as Neil pointed out, primarily for things. We know we'll need to hire some staff, but since it's a one-time grant, the best thing for us to do is to use that as much as we can to do one-time purchases, hardware, software, things that we need to operate the computer system. And there'll be more detail given on that at the budget workshops as we talk about how to use the money. There'll be some money that can be available to backfill. The other thing we're concerned about is that we want to make sure the Board of Finance realizes this is a one-time extra-money grant. They can't use it against us, if you will. They can't say, okay, well, you got $5.9 million from the state. We don't need to give you as much, because it's not operating expenses. It's going to be primarily for these special covert expenses. The other thing we talked about, the other major issue we talked about also concerns all the IT, issues with the MUNIS system and the inability of us to accomplish certain things in MUNIS that our finance department needs to accomplish, like closing books or doing budget planning, when past years are still open because they haven't finished their audit. We've talked to Tyler, and we understand that we need to address that as a town, because there's nothing we can do to the MUNIS programming by ourselves. It's a joint operation. So we'll need to communicate again with the Board of Finance and the town to try and get ways to make that streamlined, so that we're not handicapped in what we can do. And right now, it's a little difficult to do budgeting, because you can't access some of the past information or you can't spread the information out. Those are the two major things we reviewed, and most of it will be brought up in our workshop, budget workshops, February 17th and March 3rd.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions or comments from board members regarding the Finance and Audit Committee? No, it was like very nice to be able to discuss some additional resources, which we're going to need coming back and rebounding after COVID or during COVID. Anything else?
That's it. How we use that money, we'll be talking more about it.
Yeah. Luckily, Tyler Griffin was there as the Chair of the Board of Finance, so he heard all this. And I think that was very helpful. I think he has pretty good understanding of where we are. So next is School Planning and Design Committee.
Tracy, I'd just like to go on record as saying I believe that I am the youngest member of this Board of Education. It has come and gone through the years. There have been people younger than me. But I believe currently, with the exception of, at least I'm not sure how old she is, that I am the youngest member of this Board of Education. So I just want to go there. School Planning and Design did not meet this month. There wasn't anything new or pressing to add. We will definitely have our March meeting. I don't like to go more than one month without a meeting. But there wasn't anything pressing, and we've had this school consolidation thing going on and a few other things, plus, you know, COVID, which is always so fun. So we didn't meet this month, but thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. I know you guys do so much work. If there's nothing to meet about that's pressing, it's okay. So we'll hear a report next month on that. I don't, Ilda isn't on the meeting tonight. Is there anybody else from the Policy Committee that has anything to report? Katina, perhaps?
Yes, we met. And as we reviewed a minute ago, and we'll talk about it again, we, Arietna, brought the magnet school enrollment outside of attendance district policy. So here we have it for the first reading. We also look at, we need to update the staff preference policy to select Barrows and other, you know, schools. So we will meet again next month.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
And if Paula has anything else to add, that would be great.
Okay, thank you, Policy Committee. Executive Committee, we had a meeting last Wednesday. Six of the nine board members were at the Executive Committee meeting. We discussed a number of issues that came up at the last board meeting, including, you know, how to manage a lot of people on a Zoom meeting with a live chat and a lot of back and forth going on. And, you know, the upshot of that discussion is what we're trying to do tonight with the chat function. We did discuss the issue of whether or not, well, when and how we would resume in-person Board of Education meetings. That was a very good discussion. And the upshot of it is that the group didn't feel ready to recommend that we go back immediately into in-person Board of Ed meetings. There were a lot of reasons behind that. Main reason being that to ask the staff to do the kind of work that needs to be done. You may remember, we had one in-person board meeting last year after COVID started, and it didn't work very well, because we had some people in person in the room with us who were there to speak during public comment, other people who were trying to speak to us via Zoom. We had to set up special compute laptops for all the board members to have sitting in front of them, so they could watch the Zoom and be engaged in the in-person meeting. There were numerous glitches with that. The amount of people that had to be involved and the amount of time spent on that seemed a little over the top, given everything else that the staff is dealing with right now on a day-to-day basis. And then there were some board members who, you know, some board members would prefer to be meet in person, some wouldn't. Some said they wouldn't even come. So I think what we're going to do right now, since the Zoom meetings do seem to be working very well for community engagement, and we are about to go into the budget season, for example, and it does allow numerous people to be communicating with us via Zoom. We're going to stick with these remote board meetings for now. To be reevaluated on a consistent basis depends, depending on what's happening with COVID and what's happening in our school district. We also talked about the suggestion that was made at the last meeting about should we develop guidelines for moving in-between learning models? And after discussion, the group, there was consensus in the group that that would be a very difficult thing to do, because the science, the data, the circumstances are very volatile, really. And to make hard and fast rules about how to proceed and when you would do certain things doesn't seem to be very achievable in this time of COVID. So we punted on that for the time being. So we don't have a recommendation on that to bring to the board at this point in time. And that's the sort of upshot of that meeting. I will just say, as Chair of the Board, I was very concerned about that conversation we had at the Finance and Audit meeting last week about the MUNIS software and issue and getting the town to get going on creating this Health Advisory Board that doesn't seem to be getting off the ground. We've done our part. Mark, do you have something new to report on that?
Yes, I got confirmation today that the town has finally appointed a councilperson to that committee. And so the three of us, myself, Doug Larry from the Board of Finance, and Don Niles from the council are going to be putting together a date for, I don't know who else is on the committee. I haven't found out that yet. But it is slowly moving ahead. We've finally got a, as of yesterday or as of today, we've finally got a councilperson, so.
That's good.
I keep pushing.
Yeah, so we're pushing on the town on some things right now, and we'll see where that goes. Any questions? Okay, thank you. And Paula, am I handing it over to you for the AdHoc Elementary School Consolidation Committee report?
Yes, obviously, we did meet, and then we had the presentation last night. I think there's lots of information that we still need to gather. I'm interested in seeing some of the information that may have come in the past from the School Planning and Design Committee. I know that in talking with Tracy, there was a study that was done a while back, and some of that information may be helpful. And as committee, we'll be reviewing again the information that came to us at the board retreat and taking into consideration the questions that have been raised. I truly appreciate Dr. Youngberg and Mr. Weathers' informational meeting last night. I think it helped to open doors and a Mark's statement that, you know, we haven't come to any decisions and that there is still much information gathering to be done. I'm hoping helped to ease some of the concern. I know it's something that we need to look at and move forward on, and the committee will work very hard to come to some recommendation.
And I think, you know, building on that, Paula, you know, I want to say as Chair of the Board that one of the things that we want to do before we get to decision-making is to really chart out a timeline and how decisions are going to be made and the process for how there's going to be input and things of that sort needs to be more clear. You know, I think that, and that's not just because of the questions that were raised in the meetings last night. It's because we owe it to the community and to ourselves to be making our decisions that way. So I want to signal clearly to the public and the people paying attention to this that nothing is going to be railroaded through. So we're going to be, we're figuring this out together. So we're going to be, we're figuring, figuring this out together. It's our responsibility to, to take it seriously and, and have this discussion. And we don't know where the board is going to end up in the end. There's no foregone conclusion here about what the final decision is going to be. And no hidden agenda here about, you know, us trying to pull something off without letting people know. Jaime?
Yes, I will recommend, Paula, this discussion was given about six years ago, maybe. So this is not the first time that, you know, that consolidation has come about. There were plenty of discussions. And I think maybe if you go to the minutes, I don't remember what year, maybe Ms. Lambert can, can remember. But the same issues that I just heard in public comments were the same issues brought about six years ago. So there should be records of those discussions. There should be records on how we can, because we came to a decision. Why not? And, and I think that be, could be useful for future discussion. I mean, because in, at some, at some point, it may be like reinventing the wheel with the topics and issues that came about at that time. I, I listened and I recalled that they were kind of the same things, or the same objection, the same worries. So that's what I will recommend to, to the committee. Go back and see what happened when this issue came out, maybe six years ago. I, I cannot pinpoint that. But I, I would say about six years ago.
You can track it down.
Thank you.
Mary has her hand up?
Yes, I know. This has been discussed. One issue that I think has never been explored is, you know, the idea of, you know, historical preservation. You know, so there, Natchog is the oldest building, but are older buildings worth preserving as schools? What does it do to a neighborhood? You know, usually, an abandoned school is blight. And that is an area that needs some attention in our town anyway. My three kids did go to Natchog, and so I do have fondness for it, and also just for the, the community around it. And, you know, I do think that, you know, in this district, people do make all kinds of efforts, the, the staff and administration, to bring the parents in, bring the families in. But, you know, having a bus to get parents to events is, is just not going to be the same as parents who can walk the way they do in that area. You know, because then people have to all leave at the same time, or, you know, there's so many complications. The more effort that is required, the more parents you're going to lose in that case. Now, that's not the only thing to think about in terms of the school. And my other concern is just this idea that, that are we letting the town and the Board of Finance and, and the budget, you know, makers and shakers off the hook by solving a problem for them, closing a school, you know, possibly overcrowding other areas, leaving portables that perhaps shouldn't be left in place? You know, so there's a kind of engineering survey that I would, I know there were some things done by Friar when the Special Master was here, but, you know, again, there was absolutely no addressing a historical preservation or neighborhood, you know, you know, building up or keeping up a neighborhood questions. But, you know, as for the, is it really that expensive to to rehabilitate a building? Eventually, some of these toxic things that are in our buildings do have to be gotten rid of, and we have to face these things, not leave them for the future. So those are some of my questions, and I would like to kind of write some of my ideas out as well to contribute to this conversation. And I think we heard some great stuff this, during public comment, and I look forward to more of those comments. I'm interested in the fact that nobody from Wyndham Center came to this meeting, but perhaps they did raise their issues. Everyone always kind of assumes it is Natchog that's on the chopping block. I, that was the case a few years ago.
In the meeting, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to tell that in the meeting, there was just as much support for Wyndham Center School as there was Natchog last night.
And I see Kathleen Goodwin here. So thank you, Mary. Is there anybody else on the board who wants to say anything about this report? In this process?
I, I think that this is going to be a, a long process, that is going to be very careful and transparent and painful at times. But, but I am committing myself to, to, you know, be thorough. And our children and our staff deserve that. So, you know, and get everybody, all the stakeholders necessary involved in the decision-making process.
Thank you, Katina. Not seeing any other board members raising their hands. We're going to move on to action items. And the first, well, the only action item we have on the agenda, and I just want to forewarn folks that after we take action on that, we'll be open for public comment at the end of the meeting. So you could potentially, Janet will let you, will open up the chat for people to put their names in if they want to speak. So I'll entertain a motion.
Then I make a motion to approve the grant from the Humane Society to partner with the high school for dog DNA and Beyond the Breed Program.
I second that.
Motion's made by Tracy and seconded by Jaime, I think. I heard him first.
No, it was Katina.
Oh, it's Katina? Okay.
Hey, Maxine, though.
No, 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 no. I thought, I saw you when you moved around.
No, no, it was me moving. It was Katina.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Katina, I'm sorry. I love this board fighting over who seconds things, but it's very funny. So is there any discussion on this?
I think it's fabulous, and I hope that we can find a way to continue something like this, especially for our Health Services Department, that we're trying to develop with this new renovation.
Yeah, I would think there'd be students who would be pretty interested in it. Any other comments, discussion? Okay, I guess we'll do a roll call. Janet, please.
Ms. I.
I.
Dr. Galucci.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Hi.
Mr. Doyle.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Did you do it in order of age? Because I.
All right, let's see the driver's license.
With the vote of the youngest member of the board.
I said I, thank you.
I want to see a driver's license, Tracy.
I'm 47. I was born in '73.
Young.
Yeah, there, 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 at least, there are, there are, there are a number of us who are over 60 on the board, so. Anyway, so now we're up to public comment, and the chat is open. We have, yes, Janet?
Ms. Bay.
Okay, Nicole Bay. There you are.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Bay. I am the STEM coach at Barrows and parent of a fourth grader at North Wyndham School. But I'm using public comment tonight to make you aware of something that's happening at Barrows. That's great news, because we can all use some great news right now. We are working really hard with a small agriculture club of teachers to get those garden beds that were built in the back of our school back to their glory days. We are partnering with Yukon, the Spring Valley Farm, and the 4-H Coordinator at Yukon Mark Cornoyer, as well as a woman named Monique from Wiggle Room in Willen, and she's going to come and teach us how to vermicompost. We've had donations of seeds from 4-H, and we've got four teachers who are heading this up at the different grade levels, and it is completely tied to the next generation science standards. And we're super excited to get this off the ground and running, and hope that once things are going, we invite the board and the public to come and see the literal fruits of our labor.
Oh, that sounds exciting. Thank you. Is there anybody else signed up to speak under public comment? No, there isn't. Okay. Wow, this is going to be one of our shortest meetings in a while. So with nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:12 PM.
I move, we move.
Okay, do I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, Tracy made the motion, seconded by Katina. Meeting adjourned at 8:13 PM. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
All right, everyone.
Hey, Tracy, and I'm the oldest. Hard to believe.
Yeah. Again, I want a license. Thank you for, thank you for that comment, Paula. That was very nice.
I, I'm never going to live this down. I'm, I wasn't meaning anybody in particular.
Just all the board.
Yeah, all of us. Inclusive.